All right, we are live. Welcome to the Riders Block Live. Kind of the first time attempting this that isn't the breakneck speed of an election night. But for this first episode of the Riders Block Live, I've got a Trustville City Council-elect, Place Two.
That's right, Place Two.
Brian Jackson. Thank you for coming and sitting in and being a part of this.
I appreciate that. I mean, I really don't know what it feels like for all that wahoo and stuff on an election night because I didn't have an opponent. So I sort of missed out on all that fun that was happening. But thanks for having me here. Glad to be here. Be your first live. So let's see how it goes. Been looking forward to this all day long.
Me too, me too. So for those who, you know, like you said, because you ran on a post, this is all well established by now. People who maybe didn't get to know you as much potentially throughout that, and I know you were out in the community, all your dog days, all these things, but for people who are now like, okay, this is the group that was elected. Who is this guy? Tell them who you are.
Yeah, I mean, I've been a Trustville resident for over, well over 30 years. I moved into Trustville with my parents. We lived in Echo Hills, just off Service Road. Moved here about sixth grade. We started the Hewitt system or Hewitt Trustville Middle School in sixth grade. That was a huge change for me. We live in Center Point and coming to a much bigger school with much bigger opportunities, you know, was a big change, but a very good change because I love having those opportunities to do sports and football games and things like that. So, you know, as I graduated class of 94, I spent a year or so at Jeff State and then got myself into Auburn and pursued an accounting degree down there and then ultimately I got my master's degree. And then finally made my way back up north through career changes and ultimately my wife and I, once we got back up here, decided, hey, where do we want to live at? What do we want to do? And as we looked at the different areas, we decided to come up to Trustville. It was very familiar to me. I love the community here. I've been here for, obviously grew up here. And that's where we decided to plant a flag and that's where we have been for almost the entirety of 25 years we've been married and spent here in Trustville. So it's been a great place. Got three kids. Two of them have graduated. Two of them are at Auburn right now. So they just went back to school, started back this last semester, in the fall semester. And I've got another son. He's currently at the hospital. So we're still very much involved in the community in a lot of different ways. My sort of journey into the city, city involvement was actually, I think in our podcast, the initial podcast we had a couple of months ago, it really started with my daughter calling me out. I mean, she's like, Dad, you've got a great career and you've done a lot of great things in business, but what kind of, what do you do for the community? What public service have you done? And I'm like, I really couldn't have answered for it. So I think at that point, I was like, you know, I live here. I want to try to get back. I want to try to do something and get involved. And I first started applying for school position. And I did not get it, obviously, if I did it when we said here, but that led me to involvement in leadership Trustville, which led me to an appointment to planning and zoning, and then ultimately led me to running for city council, Place Two.
Okay. Well, there's already one comment from Amber Jones here. She said, congratulations, Mr. Jackson. Looking forward to having you serve our community on the Trustville City Council.
Thank you so much, Amber. And I'll say this, although I have not, I didn't have the opportunity to campaign, I did not miss that part of the city council run. It did allow me to get to work, but I have really enjoyed spending a lot of time meeting with people in the community at dog days. I had a tremendous amount of people's support just coming up and talking to me, getting to know them, listening to what they had to say. And then, of course, as I've tried to be even more visible and meet with people, officials and other leaders in the city, that's been great to be able to do that.
I know you're on planning and zoning. Is that the only board you're on right now? Or am I missing?
That's the only position that I currently am on right now, board. So I was appointed that by Mayor Choate. He called me one day, asked me to fill a role there. I've been on that, that planning commission, planning zoning, just probably over a year and a half or a year maybe. I think it was June of last year. So I've been there about a year now.
What's that been like?
At first, it was a big learning experience. My background is business, accounting, technology. There's a lot of engineering, a lot of stormwater. There's a lot of regulatory and legal talk that comes through that commission. So at first, it was, it was, it was a lot of learning of terminologies, procedure. That was the very first board I'd served on. So, you know, that was my first exposure to just how regulations and ordinances and city business really happens from a planning and zoning standpoint. But it's been a great experience for me. I've learned a lot and we've got some, I'm trying to leave that commission and that group through some, there's some changes I think we know we need to make.
Yeah. What, I'm not going to ask you things, you know, what are some recent things that you can talk about publicly that have kind of, maybe the city has seen or is about to see, that kind of thing?
Yeah, well, I mean, from a land use perspective, not much right now. I mean, at least that I know I can share, but we are hard at work looking at our subdivision regulations. That's something that we're in heavy discussion about. We're also looking at the different types of fees and structure that we charge for different services related to subdivisions. So we've got a lot of activity rolling into that board right now.
Is that impact fees? Is that what that is?
There's legally, I don't, that is some legal, there's some legal terminology there that we're trying to work through, to be honest. Exactly what is an impact fee? What is an impact fee? So that's something we're working through. We're trying to get those questions answered in the right way so we can start to equalize some of the accountability and costs that the city incurs to have these developers come in.
Yeah. What's been the hardest thing about being on P and Z? Because that's really the city's big, like, there's, you know, like, I mean, I'm not going to disparage the board that I'm on, but like, I'm on historical board and by and large, we have a lot of fun. It's, you know, I mean, I do a lot of work toward it, but it doesn't impact the way to something like a P and Z would impact a lot of people quickly.
Yeah. So I would say, if you look at one of the different boards we have in the city, the two biggest ones are probably school boarding planning. And I think the hardest thing for me is really trying to figure out, you know, how do I fit in here? What can I contribute? Because I mean, I'm not, I'm not willing just to sit there on the sideline and just really, just watch things go through. I mean, I'm like, how can I really, what can I fix? I'm a problem solver. And, you know, I think between myself and another member there, we decided, hey, we really need to focus more on the planning part. You know, we need to put the planning back in, planning and zoning, and that's something that myself and another member has been really focused on and trying to just shore up regulations, think more planning about how we want to use our land, what little land is left. We don't have a ton in Trustville left. Deerfoot's probably, you're right, Deerfoot's probably did the next core development that we're looking at. And we need to start being proactive and planning. And I think that's been, been a challenge because we haven't done a whole lot of that for various reasons, whatever. But trying to find my why and my purpose there has been the biggest challenge because I've really spent a year there trying to figure out the why here. What is, what can I contribute? Because I'm not an engineer. I don't know anything about traffic studies. I've done construction accounting a lot, but I've never, I don't know much about construction, but I know a lot about planning and solving problems.
Well, that's probably, your why is probably in that, you know, and you get on these, on these boards, they have, they have a lot of varying experiences and what people do day to day. You don't want to get planning and zoning is a seven-member board?
I believe so, yeah. I think it's seven.
You don't want to get seven builders or seven reservationists for that matter, you know? You kind of want a very...
Yeah, I agree. I think having even a board that's very specialized and really sort of niche in an area, it's important to have different perspectives, diversity of thought. We need that in every board that we have. You know, we need to have individuals that can come in from an outsider's perspective and make suggestions, ask questions. And I think that's, that's part of what, what I've been trying to do. And we've got a great commission, a lot of great individuals on there. Very, I mean, just between two or three of them, probably over 70 years of experience there in this, in what's going on. So we've got a great, great group of individuals on that committee. I'm happy to work with them. Looking forward to working with them. Hopefully I'll get to continue my work with them. We'll see how, how that rolls up from a liaison duty. You don't know that yet, but, but hopefully, you know, we can get something accomplished between here and the end of October.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be interesting to see how, how the mayor-elect been short kind of ditties of liaison duties and, and all of that stuff.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing that, you know, made public. You know, we've obviously had some conversation about it, but that's, that's something for me to talk about. I don't really think I'm...
That's the head man that, well, in November, when do you all get sworn in?
November 3rd, I believe. That's what I'm, you know, when you look at the change in administration, I believe November 3rd is the date. That's the first Monday after October 31st, which is usually considered the fiscal year in most places.
Okay. Has it hit you yet?
I'll tell you, it sort of hit me a little bit a while back when I was just being asked questions about why I voted or I did something on P and Z. And, you know, it's like, hey, this is, you know, you're going to get, I mean, people are asking you why you do stuff. And I think, you know, you've got to be ready to answer that. And I'd be absolutely crazy to say I'm not nervous about it. I mean, I've tried to be at every council meeting just from a observing, you know, procedure, you know, the way things are discussed, the flow of the meeting. But I do take this job very seriously. And I do realize that, you know, there's a community out here that I'm allowed to be in this position to serve them. They give me permission to be here and I need to recognize and honor that.
Absolutely. What are you looking forward to the most?
There's a lot. I mean, I think, I think one, one just working with the other council members. I would say we've, we've got such a great and innovative, younger group coming in this time. And I had a friend text me the other day. He said, you know, the averages of our mayor and council is going from 60 to 43 and a half. And that's a statement. And I'm really looking forward to working with them and, you know, hearing their perspectives, their ideas, you know, that diversity of thought and really trying to find ways to involve our city, you know, and move it forward and try to, you know, we're going to have some issues, we know we are, that we've got to solve. We don't know all of them. Finance, this is going to be a big, we already know that. But here, you know, what they want to do, how we can innovate and just working together. I love working with a team and solving problems together. We've just got a great group. Excited about that.
Yeah, I think I was, I was doing some of my historical stuff and I don't have it all right in front of me, but I was looking up, you know, I think Ben Short, I have to say the last name now, now that Ben Horton is also active.
Yeah. We had discussions along the group. How are we going to differentiate Ben Short and Horton? We had to come up with a convention.
Yeah, Mayor Short, I guess. But I was looking up, you know, Trustville has had 10 mayors before Ben. Ben is number 11. Now, obviously that includes, you know, guys who have served multiple terms and everything, but 11 now are different men. And he's the youngest to have been elected mayor. So I got curious looking that up because I knew there were some guys, I mean, Trustville's had a range. Like I've seen guys elected at 39 or 40, I think, was maybe the youngest before Ben. I don't know if Ben's had his birthday yet. So he's, I mean, we graduated together. So he's either, he's either 36 or 37. So, you know, so he's, he's the youngest by, by a couple of years. And, you know, you've had guys elected at 62, you've had guys elected at 47.
I'm definitely pulling the average up, on the age side, anyway.
You know, so that's, you're right. That is, it's definitely a, it does feel like a turning point in a way. Like, now there's going to be, y'all, it could be y'all's job because, you know, y'all've got a lot of hard things that are going to hit you right off the bat. You know that, but you wouldn't run for it if you weren't, feel like you were ready for it.
I agree. I mean, I think, you know, everyone I've talked to, all the other council elects, I mean, they knew this is going to be a challenge. And, you know, I think what's great about this, as I look upon that group, there's no one other group that's not afraid of the challenge that I've known of. And I've been with them for a while now. And they have, they have always stepped up in their professional ops and they're definitely going to step up in this, in this job as well.
Yeah. We have a hi from Jesse Odell. So, hi Jesse.
Jesse, hey, how you doing?
There we go. We gave you some screen time tonight, Jesse. You didn't get as much screen time during the, during the election coverage. So I'll throw your hi guys up on the, up on the screen. On the other side of that, what are you, what are you maybe not looking forward to as much?
I think the biggest challenge for me, and this is more of a personal challenge, is that historically, you know, the government process runs very slow and things happen at a pace that it's going to be difficult for me. You know, in, in the business world, you know, we, I work, you know, with a group of individuals and we move with a sense of urgency because we're a growing company. We move fast, we make decisions. And that's going to be a challenge for me to deal with. And not necessarily that, hey, there's a lot of input that has to be happened, but it's like, hey, why can't we just go and do this? You know, that sense of urgency, you know, certain boards meet every month and it's all care on this monthly cadence where I'm used to be on the daily cadence. And that's going to be a challenge for me because I'm like, you know, there's, let's get it done. You know, what, what is to keep us from moving forward with this or at least get to a point where we can discuss this? So that's, I think that's going to be a big challenge for me just because of things like at the meeting walls, which we have to abide to. And then, you know, just, you know, there's just a lot of layers in decisions that have to be identified and handled. And I think that's going to be a big challenge because I like to move quick and get decisions made and, you know, we keep things moving forward because I think momentum is important in certain type of situations.
How do you like, I'm curious, like, and this is going to, this is so off the cuff based on what you just said. So it might not make any sense, but like, you know, not just Trustville, many cities have had people feel like, oh, they just slipped that in or I didn't know anything about that. Do you find, do you find a balance, like, is there a balance to find in working problems, problem solving quickly while also ensuring that the public, like, hey, we're going to let you know about this? Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely. And I think almost in every, I would say, in, in my experience in the business world, there's always checkpoints where you have to go through some kind of compliance or need to get some input. And, and I think there are certain things and procedures we can do, you know, I think push forward, but I think there's going to be very obvious and natural places where either the law or it just makes a lot of sense to have a public forum about something or to bring it to the public or a public hearing. You know, I think in planning and zoning, some things we're working on, I mean, we can have, we have, we have to have public hearings for certain things. I mean, you're just required to do that. Now, you know, we can open it up, but it's up to the people to come and attend that and know what's going on. And I would definitely like to see us do a much, much better job of communication about meetings and what's going on. And I think this council, I know Ben, Ben's committed to doing that. He has been for four years, you know, as a counselor. And I'm sure that will carry forward. So, you know, there are a lot of things, I think, behind the scenes that you can do, but I think there's, there's some natural checkpoints in some areas where, hey, you're either required to take it to the public or, or it's okay to stop and say, hey, you know what? We need more input on this because it affects, you know, there's certain things that, hey, it's just a procedure, but there's some things that will affect other people that won't be input on.
I'm going to show a couple of these. I'll put this back on the screen. A fellow city council at Kimberly-Vare said she was digging the ticker at the bottom of the screen. I didn't tell, I don't think I told you that, but I was putting this up some upcoming city meetings. So people at Trustville who are watching this, like, put those in your planner. If you, if that's something you want to get, you want to go to design review, there you go. Go planning and zoning, city council, there you go. Natalie Spock agreed. And as much as it pains me to put Lance Pace's profile picture up on this screen right now with that, with that...
That MSU.
That tag on Seminole. But as you can see there, Lance said, so excited for you. Throw for the upcoming council to ask the tough questions while maintaining wonderful integrity and friendship. Even when you disagree, the new council will continue to represent us so well.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that, Lance. Appreciate it.
And let's get that Seminole off my screen. Your team, your team not only earned it, they deserved it. My team did not.
I was proud of my team. We actually looked like a football team. We had a quarterback who could play, who acted like he knew what was happening out there. So...
And we'll be able to talk football here pretty soon. In about 10 minutes, we're going to have Coach Josh Floyd chime into this thing. But yeah, like, the thing that got me, like, years ago, I kind of, okay, I kind of, I'm not going to say I stopped caring, but so many people kind of live and die by college football in this state. I have, I have always been more of a college basketball guy. I got ridiculed through college. I got ridiculed since college, which was a long time ago, that I've always said, you know, I've experienced Alabama national championships, plenty of them. But, but I have long said, I would give up five football national championships for one in basketball. And people said I was crazy. And I'm like, look, I'm willing, I'm kind of willing to go to 10.
We consider to have a great debate on which, which is harder to make it to, the national championship football or the national championship for basketball. I think that'd be, that'd be a great debate right there among a lot of people, but...
We need to run that through some AI and see what it thinks based on...
That can be arranged. That can be arranged. But, but, you know, I was at Auburn during the brother years, you know, when he was there. Dave Russ is our quarterback. And then all the beginning, and I think my first year down there was when Terry Doll got fired. So as tired as I was to be in Auburn, to finally get Auburn football games, we had some great games I got to go to, but ultimately we didn't have any great seasons, you know, even terrible this first year. So I had to roll going back as an alumni to really experience some good games.
I had the like eclectic kind of deal. Like, I got down there in 2006. So I got Shula's last year. So they had just played in the Cotton Bowl. And then I went down there and I don't remember how those six ended up, just so, so whatever. Then we get Saban and everybody go, it was going crazy, me included. You know, I'm like a sophomore, junior, whatever at the time. And I was at the Louisiana Monroe game that they lost at home. There were probably only a couple hundred students left at the end of the game. And I was one of them because it was just kind of comical. Like, you know, I'm like, I'm only down here for three, four years. I'm going to stay at the game. But we just sat there and we were like, this guy? This, this is the guy that's going to bring us back, you know? And then a year later, we're in the Sugar Bowl. And then I graduate. We've got the Heisman Trophy winner and we win the Natty. So I'm like, that was a very interesting three and a half years where we go from coach fire, new coach, losing games that shouldn't lose regardless of who your coach is, to bam, into the Sugar Bowl, bam, beating Texas for the national championship. And a Heisman Tro, first Heisman Trophy winner. It was like, okay, but I would still give up five.
It may not be an alibi as a fan, but I can wholeheartedly understand and, and what he does and how he leads his team and his program. I've done a lot of reading up on him and how he does it. Very, very impressed with him.
I gotta, I gotta say this about Gus Malzahn because obviously, so for years, couldn't stand the guy, obviously. Like, he was, he was the one who had his number to the group. And, you know, him being the offensive coordinator at Florida State and after Florida State won that game, did you see his tweet?
No, I didn't see it there.
Gus Malzahn has this tweet go out after Saturday and it just says, felt like old times tonight.
Oh, yeah.
And I was like, you know, it was, for once I have a hat on, but it was like, I kind of had to tip the hat because that made me laugh. That was so good.
I don't know if you guys watched the SCC shorts, but a great video this week regarding that.
Yeah. Real quick, Jesse asks, when's the swearing in? Is that November?
I believe it's November 3rd, Jesse. So that is, that is the, the day to have them. I calendar at least for that, that day. So I believe that's in this being, I haven't had official news when that is, but that would be the most logical day.
Okay. And then Cooper Odell says, great show. Thank you, Cooper. We appreciate that. Let me get that back on the screen there. I'll keep watching that ticker as we, as we talk here. Put some things in your calendar. I'll update that on all, for all of these live shows as we move along. Let's see. Yes, you know what? I'm going to throw that up there. Kimberly says, nice shirt. You know, like, I kind of needed the, here, watch, watch this, Kimberly. Bang. And bang. I'll just go ahead and say, visit 18 South. They're, they're in Homewood, they're in Trustville. They're, I think it's Patrick Way in Trustville, down near Panera and Capella and all those places. Appreciate Patrick. You know, kind of getting me right for this live with this shirt. Got my, got kind of two of my favorite colors there with the, with the blue and the green. So appreciate him doing that. And let's see. Jesse Odell said, planning on being there probably for the swearing in.
Love to have you there.
Okay. Mark Ward, I will say, hey, we got to give a shout out to Mark Ward, too. We are, we are in the Film Dog Media studio right now. So thank you, Mark, for allowing that space. And it's incredible. We appreciate you more than you know. Next live show, now this one's not over yet, but my next live show is scheduled for this coming Tuesday night. It will be at 6:30 PM and it will be at the Trustville Public Library and it will be with city council elect Jim Miller.
Oh, cool.
So me and Jim are going to, are going to hang out at the, at the library and talk about some of the same stuff, you know, and what it's been like for him because he's going through kind of the same whirlwind you've been.
Well, he is, not exactly. I mean, I haven't, I'm not having to campaign and deal with signs and all, you know, so I really, it's hard for me to relate what they've been through. But I know, you know, I think Vince said it best the other day is, you know, not having a runoff is going to give us the advantage, have some extra time for preparation, transition. I think we're going to need that. And I'm looking forward to seeing that happen. So...
Absolutely. Let me ask you one more thing here. You know, we talked, I don't remember when we did our podcast, sometime in the spring, summer?
Yeah, it was May. It was probably May. Yeah.
What, what have you learned about city government since you announced to now when you were elected?
I think one of the things, and this really, I think, sort of extended from my experience with leadership Trustville. And we just have, we have a lot of great people in this community. And when, especially when we start talking to them one-on-one, hearing their background, what brought them to Trustville, you know, we, we should be thankful. We have some of the people we have. They're, they're leaders in our community because that's what I've been doing for the last several months is just, I've been really drinking a lot of coffee in Maple and, and meeting with, you know, a lot more great citizens have reached out. I've been able to meet with them, but also getting to meet with, you know, city officials from, you know, Trustville Gas, Public Safety, of course, Dr. Martin. I got to sit down with Mayor Choate last week, you know, and sat in with Lisa. But God, we got a lot of great people in this community. And I think in order for, I think any organization, you've got to have the right people. And that, that, that's the same thing as with government. I mean, you have the right people in the right seat to make, to make that work. And I think we've got a lot of that here in Trustville. And I think that's, that's probably one of the things I learned that, I saw a little bit of that leadership Trustville, but that was more in that medium. But being individual, one-on-one, God, just enhanced my view of that perspective. We have good people that, you know, wanted to podcast and, you know, that want to serve our community in ways that you can't even imagine, both through their business or personally. And I think that's, that's something I've had a new respect for, I think, and garnered respect for during the last few months.
Absolutely. You got you another comment here from Cheryl Stone Hamilton. Said, Brian, your interview with me was inspiring. I liked your story of wanting to serve. And then your first foray wasn't successful, but you kept going.
Yes. Yeah, that is very true. But that's okay. Throughout some, you know, interviews and people I've talked to, you know, you win or learn. You know, you're going to find a way to win or it's already experienced. And that's something that, you know, sometimes things don't go your way, but hey, you fail fast, you learn and pick it up and go, big on to the next. So...
And then one more comment here from Jesse Odell. Said, I think it's also great that the council leaving is more than willing to help you all get settled in and work as a sounding board.
I will, I will echo that, Jesse, because I have not reached out to, have not been denied by any person in the current administration or who is serving as department head of meeting. They've been very accommodating to meet with me, to talk with me, give me the time that I wanted to ask some questions. So very big thanks to all those that are in Public Safety and Utilities and our school system, but also the current administration. They've been, they've been great to me. And I'm sure they've been great to other council elects and just trying to help us understand city business and their role and some of the items that we can expect.
Absolutely. Well, that's all the questions I had. We're going to stay live here and wait for Coach Floyd to, to pop into this thing any minute. What else can we talk about while we wait for Coach Floyd to pop into here?
I mean, AI is something I always like to talk about.
Okay. Let's talk about, let's talk about AI until Coach Floyd pops in. When did you start using it and why?
So it's really, I've been, been in the AI game for probably more than a year now as I've been going into the speaking engagements in different, in different places. And even now, we're usually going to talk to organizations and business groups about using AI. And, and even now we're usually going to talk to organizations and business groups about the use of AI. Uh, so it's been a, a, a great journey talking to people and then seeing the different perspectives of it, but also the different uses of it. Uh, so we've, uh, definitely had a lot of fun doing that.
I'm, I'm one of those that's like, I'm scared of it, but I also, but I've also grown to kinda love it. Like, okay, like just big truth time here. Uh, so when I was finishing the book that just came out, okay, so I didn't have it like, like I wrote the book. Let's just, that's number one. I wrote the book. But when I got to bibliography, references, that kinda thing. I've got a 400 and something page document that I wasn't keeping a running list. That's on me, hand up. That's on me. But I needed some help just parsing through that thing, that just thick document of find every mention of Birmingham News. Find every mention of the Post here, of the Kahava Hua, of the Jerkerson Advertiser. In, anything that is, that is a newspaper, I need you to pull it out for me and then I put it all in order. But I needed that help.
Yeah, I, I love it. It's, it's an, it's an 80% tool. Um, it's a great assistant for us and great technology, but I really enjoy using it and learning how to use it, so.
Yeah. Well, we have a guest. How are you?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Been great.
Big wins over Jag against the city to start. How you feel like y'all are off to?
Good man. I appreciate it. It's been good. I mean, uh, I think we've had a good start to the season and taking care of business like we need to. And, uh, we've been able, we've been fortunate to play a lot of guys the first few games, which is always good for developing depth and, and team morale, all, all those things help, you know? So, um, you know, we, we have plenty of things we've, we need to improve on, um, and work on. But again, I think, I think we're, uh, ready to go into region play now.
And I, I wouldn't ask you to announce anything here, whatever, but you know, quarterback Zach Benedict, I don't, I don't know what happened. I think you know, I'm kinda with Clay Chalkwell all, all year this year working on a project. But, uh, how, how, how's he doing? What, you're looking at playing a lot of guys tomorrow night or?
Sure.
Friday night?
Yeah. Um, you know, he, he's doing okay. I mean, you know, he's, he's probably a situation where he's gonna kinda be week to week. We don't, we don't have an exact day. We really don't, you know, exactly when he's gonna be good or not. But, um, you know, unfortunately we've had a few guys go down with injury the first few weeks, just, you know, it just happened, you know? Sometimes it's a fluke thing and unfortunately it's part of the game. Um, so, um, you know, we, we, again, it's not a one team, one person game. Obviously, you know, it's a team game. And so I, I think that the good thing is we have a lot of good weapons on offense, um, at receiver and running back. You know, we've got an experienced offensive line. And so, I mean, I think all those things help, you know? It's not so like somebody has to come in and just take over the whole thing. But it's obviously a big spot, big position. Um, and so, you know, it's against team game, uh, you know, defense has to play well, offense has to play well, special teams. So it's, it's everybody. And, uh, whether Zach plays or doesn't play, I mean, it's, you know, there's still, and there's a whole lot, a whole lot to this thing, you know, on a Friday night. So, um, you know, we do, we're, we're usually the guys play really well to win the game Friday.
Yeah. And I don't think I did a proper introduction because we're going live, so this stuff moves quick. But I would tell him that Josh Floyd, City Council elect, Brian Jackson.
Nice to meet you, Coach Floyd.
Yes, sir. Good to meet you.
How, how long, how, how many years have I been asking you about one of your boys and now that gets to continue?
Several, several, man. It's, it's hard to believe, man. So, um, you know, my, you know, my oldest son Peyton's a, a sophomore in college. And then, um, Parker's a senior now and Jack's a freshman. So, you know, we've got two at the high school, my, my two youngest at the high school, which is, which is hard to believe, man. So, um, but it's, it's been fun, you know? We've had a good time. Um, you know, I've had a great time growing up in Trustville and, uh, it's been, it's been fun, man.
Yeah. What, what is your, like, cause I know, I know Jack has gotten to, has gotten to play a good bit of these, these first two, especially this last week. What, what has been kinda your, your message to him? Uh, do you have a message as a coach and do you have a message as a dad? What, what's that been like these first two weeks?
Sure. I mean, there, there's always some dynamics there with dad and coach, um, you know? And, and I, I really do, I try to, um, be dad at home. I try as much as I can. Uh, you know, that doesn't mean we don't get a little extra film time, you know, sometimes and, and sometimes it's necessary. And so there's, there's some benefits to that as well, uh, obviously. But, uh, you know, it's, the biggest thing is what I was saying earlier, like, you know, even if you're at the quarterback position, I mean, you don't have to do everything on your own. I mean, you know, you have a really good supporting cast. Um, you know, obviously when you play quarterback, a big part of that position is protecting the football. Um, you know, keeping, you know, and I've just told Jack be himself, you know, be yourself. And, you know, he's, he's grown up playing this game for a long time. And, you know, he ended up playing a little bit more last week than we probably anticipated on him playing. Um, but, you know, but I, I've been really pleased with, with how he's played so far. And, uh, you know, they'll just keep getting better throughout the season.
What are, like at this, at this age, I mean, just him being a freshman, what, what similarities, what differences are there with him and Peyton?
I mean, yeah, that's a good question. I mean, they're very similar. Um, you know, even their style of play is, is pretty similar. I mean, all three of my boys are, are similar in a lot of ways. Um, Parker, you know, just, he's always loved defense. And, uh, you know, he, he's a guy that can play some quarterback for us as well this year. You know, got some snaps last year. Um, and we'll probably put him in some quarterback this year. Um, you know, we haven't had to do that yet, but, um, you know, he just. Parker was an all-state first-team linebacker last year and been our leading tackler last year, you know? So, I mean, it's, it, he can play some QB, but he's obviously been really good on that side of the ball. And so he's, he, he played, I think Parker's last time actually played quarterback, quarterback was ninth grade. Um, you know, he's just got some snaps a little bit over the last two years, but, um, you know, he just, he's always liked it, man. And, uh, he, he, he loved being a defensive player. Um, Jack has played a little bit of both ways, but you know, this, I mean, he's, he's definitely been more of a quarterback most of his life. Um, and he's got a really good group. Our ninth grade group's a, a really special group and we can keep those guys together. And, uh, so, you know, Jack, I mean, even though he's enjoying varsity, man, he's been a little sad he can't play with all his buddies, you know? I mean, as, as funny as that sounds, man, everybody wants to play on Friday nights, but he's, you know, it's a close group. So, um, you know, he's been out there supporting them, um, every game. And like I said, he just ended up playing a little bit more, probably last week than he, than he thought he was going to. But, uh, but it, but it was good.
Yeah. I've got this ticker running at the bottom of the screen that's telling people about the game this Friday. So number four, Hewitt Trustville, number five, Vestavia Hills, class 7A, region three opener. Uh, Hewitt Trustville has beaten Vestavia Hills five times in a row. How misleading is that?
I mean, it's pretty misleading because, um, we, we know that, you know, four of those games have pretty much come down to the last play of the game. So, you know, we've had, we've had some really good battles with them, you know? I think 2020 is a seven-point game. I think 21 was, um, I know that game, we were down most of the game. And we scored a tie with just about three or four minutes left in the game. And then we ended up having two defensive touchdowns like literally at the last minute and a half of the game. So it ended up being a 14-point game, but we were losing with three or four minutes left in the game. So, um, you know, last year was, you know, a four-point win. And I think the other year was a seven or eight point win. Again, it tamed down to the very last play. So, I mean, you say it's always been a great program. Um, we're obviously excited. We've been able to be on the, you know, winning side of that the last few years. But our, our kids know what it's about. I mean, they, they, they play, you know, they're, they're a really good football team. Uh, you know, Rob's done a great job over there since he took over. I think he's just, you know, he's, he's taken them to a new level. Um, where they're, they're a playoff team every year right now. And, uh, so I, I think it's, it's a challenge for us. Um, but, you know, we're, we're excited. I think it'd be a huge crowd. I know they're gonna bring a lot of people and, you know, I expect our people to show up. Or even have a youth football night where a lot of our, we're recognizing our youth football teams. And so I think it will be a, a really fun night and it's obviously a lot more fun if you, if it ends the right way for us, so.
So Coach Floyd, this being a huge robbery, I mean, and going back to, uh, my experiences watching Hewitt play in high school. I mean, Vestavia Hills was always a big game. I mean, every time. And you're right, it was always down to a final click or final play many times. You know, what is your message to the team this week? How are you getting them prepared? Are you doing anything different? I mean, this is a big game, uh, big showing for Hewitt. Uh, what do you guys do differently to get the team ready for this, for this opponent?
Well, it is, it is a big game and our kids know that. Um, you know, we've obviously talked about that. I mean, it's the first region game, so it doesn't matter who you're playing really. I mean, everybody wants to start out one on one. You never wanna start out 0-1 in the region. I mean, the, you know, the season's not over if that happens to you, but that's not how anybody wants to start. And so, um, I know Vestavia started kinda, you know, with losing record early on last year, then got on a roll. And so, um, you know, you just, you just, you just will never wanna start that way. But, uh, you know, we, we've, I wouldn't say we've done anything really differently, um, necessarily this week. Our guys, again, there, there's a little more intensity, you know, a little more bounce in their step because they know how much this game means. Um, again, it's more about the region game even than even Vestavia. You know, it's a big game they wanna win. But I think it's, you know, they just know it's important and, you know, from that standpoint. And, uh, we just, you know, our message all week has just been get prepared for a four-quarter game. And it's going, you know, we're gonna have to play really good football to win. And, uh, I mean, the same old things that have been going on football forever. I mean, you gotta protect the ball, you know, you gotta make, you gotta be really good on special teams. I mean, all, all those things that, you know, they all add up. And again, when you look at our games with them the last few years, um, again, you can look at one or two, three plays here that were the difference. And, uh, you know what? When you get a lot of one-score games like that, I mean, it, you know, every single play matters. And, uh, so, you know, we just, we didn't fuck, we played real well last year. Not taking anything away from them. They played really good that night. Um, our defense played pretty good most of the night. Uh, but we just, you know, offensively we didn't fuck, we played very well, you know? So, um, and their defense had something to do with that. But, uh, you know what? We think we, we can play better this season.
What's it, I, I wanted to ask you, you, you mentioned Coach Evans and, you know, I've, I've talked to him a good bit over the years. We've had some funny moments on podcasts. He does things maybe a little differently than, than, than some guys. What, what is it like preparing for a guy like him? Just, just, you know, what, what's the week like watching Phil on them and trying to figure out what they might do?
It, it's really difficult. Um, they do so many things that are just, you know, they're not, it's not conventional. Uh, both sides of the ball, offense and defense. I mean, they're gonna fly around on defense, give you, you know, 25 different looks in, in the game. Um, and, you know, even before he was there, he was at Mountain Brook, you know, we played him at Mountain, he was at Mountain Brook. Before that, he was at Hoover. So, you know, we've, we've gone back and forth against each other for several years. And, you know, he's one of the harder guys to get prepared for just because they, again, they, they give you so many different looks. It's hard to get comfortable, um, ever knowing what they're gonna do. Um, offensively, they do so much misdirection. Um, you know, you gotta be disciplined there, you know? It's hard to find out where the ball is sometime and all of a sudden guys screaming down the field wide open, um, you know? So that, they do a good job. The office coordinator does a really good job over there as well. And so, um, I, I think that's the biggest challenge. Um, you know, these guys are gonna play hard. Um, you know, they're, and they may not have the biggest group every single year, you know, but, uh, from a physical standpoint, but they, they're, they are strong, you know? I mean, they, they, they get the most out of their kids and you know they're gonna play good, sound football every single Friday night. And so, you know, that's what we've gotta be ready for. Um, and again, we have to play at a high level to win this game. Cause I do think this team is probably the best team they've had in a while there. You know, I, they're very explosive on offense. And, uh, you know, I had a very impressive win last week aga- against Auburn.
Were you, were you surprised by that at all? Like, I, I like, I don't think many of us were maybe surprised that Vestavia won. Because like you said, it is a very talented team. Uh, like it or not, I think Vestavia Hills is one of the toughest places to play in the state. Um, but were, were you surprised by the, the margin at all?
I mean, I, we, we weren't surprised they won the game, like you said. Um, I think winning by that much, yeah, I mean, again, yeah, I think that was a little bit of a surprise. Um, just because, you know, Auburn last, I, I really thought Auburn was one of the top two teams in the state last year. And, uh, you know, they end up losing, I think, I guess in the, so the quarterfinals or semifinals, I can't. I think it was quarterfinals, I believe. Um, I think, you know, they lost. Um, so, I mean, I, I think, I, but I, I just remember watching them on film a few times. And I thought they were, if not one of the top two, I mean, they had definitely top two or three teams in the whole thing. And so I, and I, I know they lost some guys, you know, so Auburn is a little bit younger in some spots this year. So I'm sure that had something to do with it. But, but again, I, I just think, I think quarterback matters, you know? He's a really good player. Taff, um, played a lot last year and, uh, you know, he's really good. I mean, I think he's one of the better QBs in the state. And so, um, he's a dual-threat kid. So it's hard, you know, it's hard to defend what he does. And, uh, he's a tough kid, you know, he's a competitor. And so, I mean, it's just, you know, that, that's just the facts. I mean, he's, he does a good job there.
I, I feel, I feel slightly, not slightly, I, I feel vindicated that you said that because there was a moment last year, and I don't remember the game because I saw Vestavia Hills a few times, but I, I remember saying to somebody, it was probably a cop. Uh, I, I think I said, I was like, this kid's gonna be like back in the year before all of a sudden Dunn in 7A. Maybe even a Mr. Football candidate if we wanna get a little crazy. Uh, he seems like a dude who is going to be a problem for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, he is. And again, I, I think part of that, he's just a competitor. And you can tell me, you know, there, there's some plays last week where he's blocking downfield. Um, I mean, he's that kind of a kid, you know? I mean, he could probably play linebacker if he needed to, you know, he's one, he's one of those guys. So, um, they, they have two quarterbacks that they've played. Now they have a, a few things they've done offensively where both quarterbacks are in the game. Um, again, so that's another thing you have to prepare for and, and another challenge that they have that, that they put on you. Um, so, you know, we're, we're, you know, it, it's not like, it's gonna be hard to just completely shut them down. Uh, you know, even as good as we feel like our defense is, that's, that's hard to do. And so, you know, you, you try to limit big plays, limit explosive plays. They have had some explosive plays the first few weeks.
Well, I think we're gonna probably wrap it right about here, Coach. Uh, if you don't mind, cause I know you've got the connection. Uh, we, me and Brian were talking about it a little bit ago. You, you can tell, you can tell Coach Malzahn that at least one Alabama fan thought his tweet was hilarious.
Yeah, yeah. It was pretty funny, man. It was pretty funny. So, you know, I, you know, I don't, I, who knows what all that means? You know how it is. It's one game. So, I mean, you, you know, everybody's gonna go nuts. I understand that most sides of it, you know? Uh, but I'd say both teams still have a long way to go before we figure it out. But, you know, I do think, of course, they had a really good game plan. I mean, obviously I'm biased with Coach Malzahn because he's, he's my guy. But, uh, but, you know, quarterback played well for him, you know? Quarterback plays that well, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to beat a team. So, you know, who knows what will happen, man? We'll, we'll, we'll see. But it was, yeah, it was funny. A lot of people got kicked out of it or, or were pretty upset, so.
I just, I, I, I stopped the, uh, living and dying by Alabama football a, a long time ago. Now, now Alabama basketball is a different story for me, so I might have to have that discussion with Monso or something, but. But, yeah, I, when I read it, like, if it would've been like 10 years ago, I probably had been like, this guy, you know? But I read it and I was like, you know what? I was well done.
Well, you know, it's really not his personality to do that kinda stuff, you know what I mean? I think, you know, Elaine Kiffin, you, you expect that, you know what I mean? So, you know, that's all the time. Like you're wa- you're waiting to see what Elaine puts out there, you know? That's always fun to watch, but like Coach Malzahn, that's not really his, his style, you know what I mean?
Do you think, do you think that's maybe the difference in being the, the head coach and being the coordinator? Like, does he feel a little more free in that maybe?
Probably so, a little bit, man. I, you know, I, I had, I've talked to him a few times since he's been there. I mean, I think he's enjoying getting rid of some of that head coach. I mean, cause it's, again, it's a different game than it was five years ago. You know that. And so I think he's probably enjoying doing a little bit more true, true coaching right now. Um, you know, than, than he probably has the last few years. But, you know, college football, I mean, I, it's a crazy deal. So, I mean, I, you know, I have teams I've always liked college pro and all that, but I don't, there's only, there's only one team I lose sleep on, you know? And that's, and that's Hewitt Trustville Huskies. So, I mean, that's the only one that keeps me up at night anymore. I don't, I don't have any room for anybody else to, even if I pull for somebody to keep me up too late, so. I got enough problems, you know, on, on our hands trying to be successful, so.
Absolutely. You got anything on it?
I don't. Just, uh, thank you, Coach, for all you do for, for our city and do a great job, Coach. And hoping I get to, to see y'all play, uh, and see you win on Friday night.
All right. I appreciate you.
No problem. I appreciate it, guys.
All right.
All right. Take care, man.
All right. I think that's it. You want to end this thing? Feel good?
I feel great.
I feel good too.
Thanks for, uh, having me on your first live. Looking forward to the, the others you've got lined up the next couple of weeks, so.
Yeah. We'll, we'll see how they go. You know, we'll try to get some more. I'll try to, I'll try to kinda bring in some special guests like that, you know, and, you know? Cause like I said, I'll say it again here, uh, next week, uh, the live will be Tuesday night, uh, at 6:30 PM. Uh, and we will be at the Trustville Public Library. I'm not gonna say what room because I don't, you know, we don't, we don't want knocking on the door. I felt, I felt like during the election, people, cause like the phone went crazy during the election. I felt like people were gonna start showing up when they figured out where we were.
Yeah.
So, you know, no, I'm just playing around. But we'll, we'll be, we'll be live there from the library, uh, at 6:30 PM. Uh, Trustville City Council elect, Jim Miller, uh, in line place four, will be, will be live with me. Uh, still figuring out if there'll be some, a, a special guest. Maybe there will, maybe they won't. You'll have to tune in to find out. So, uh, appreciate you coming by and doing this first.
Anytime. Glad to, glad to be a guest and do it again anytime you need me to, so just let me know.
Absolutely. We'll do a bunch of this going forward. Thank y'all for watching. We're, we're gonna end this thing right here.